All right, uh, I guess we'll call meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. It is five thirty four P M. October seventeen twenty twenty three. Uh, roll call, Counselor, uh, Jacom is here, Counselor Westerveld and Counselor McBride. Are all present. Do any of you gentlemen have emails or communications?
I do not.
No.
I do not, other than the information that was provided to to review this meeting.
Correct, uh, I would say that as well, just same emails we got for this evening's agenda. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the June twentieth twenty twenty three meeting minutes for the Town Council Personnel Appointments Meeting.
A second. McBride.
Thank you, moved by Jacom, second by McBride. Uh, discussion, okay, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because I was not at that meeting.
Abstain, okay. Uh, so, so one abstaining, Westerveld. So, two in favor, Jacom McBride. Uh, zero opposed, one abstentions, Westerveld. Uh, the minutes are approved. All right, we'll move over to new business. And just so everybody is aware, watching. Uh, we'll go down in the order, uh, I chose to set up the agenda with, uh, the appointments first and then the reappointments. Uh, at at the end, as there is various of them. Um, and there was two changes to the agenda, um, for the counselors, so you could see, um. The appointment of, uh, for. Uh, for Paul Fox, if if the committee, uh, decides to move forward. His, the term date would be three, five, twenty twenty five, not three, five, twenty twenty three. So just make sure you guys have that correction, that would be when the term expires, would be three, five, twenty twenty five. And. The reappointment of Taylor Samuel, uh, for the Fair Rec Commission. Uh, his term was supposed to be seven oh one twenty twenty five. He will no longer be, uh, on the agenda because he has moved out of town. So. Uh, so that is, uh, those are the two changes there. Okay. Uh, so let's get started, so we'll go with, uh, the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, so there's two vacancies for that, but only one applicant. Uh, is Mister Paul Fox present? I would ask that you unmute. All right. Mister Paul Fox, are you present? Nope. Nobody else in attendees, all right, going one, going twice, okay. Uh, just so everybody's aware, at least he was applying for the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, so. Um, and then we'll go with the Groton Housing Authority, uh, which has one vacancy, but two applicants. Uh, we have Dane Stevenson and Karen Hatcher, who I, looks like they're both here. So we have, uh, we'll go based on. You know, my bullet points here, so, uh, Mister Dane Stevenson here?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, thank you, um, so if you wanna just introduce yourself, committee, I think like an elevator speech and why you're interested. Uh, why you think we should be selected and, um, any anything else that's relevant and, uh, then we'll ask some questions.
Sure, uh, Dane Stevenson, um, been a resident of Groton for. Oh, I think a little over ten years now, uh, I work at Electric Boat as an engineer. Uh, previously served on R T M, uh, so I have some government experience as far as that is concerned. Uh, I put my application in a while ago, um, in several years, I think it's been. Uh, so very, uh, intrigued by the opportunity to serve, um. Uh, I'm very passionate about, uh, housing, um, and, um. You know, helping the community as far as finding stable and, uh, accommodating housing. Um, and, uh, that's pretty much all I have.
All right, thank you. Do we have, uh, any questions from Counselor Westerville or Counselor McBride?
I'd I'd like to ask, um, what experience in your past would would help you prevail in this position?
I don't have any direct experience, uh, as far as this particular topic, but I am a very studious person, uh, I. Would happily consume, uh, any sort of, uh, materials directed, uh, for preparation. Um, I would say, but my most driving factor is just, uh, intent to, um. Again, uh, ensure the best conditions for those in the town.
Thank you.
Hmm, anything else, Counselor McBride?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Westerville?
Not at this time.
Nope, all right, uh, I'll ask my questions. Uh, Mister Stevenson, are you aware of Robert's rules?
I'm very, I'm very familiar with Robert's rules, um. In addition to my my experience in, uh, town government, I also serve on the Board of Director or Trustees for the Bill Memorial Library in the City of Groton. Uh, and I'm often counted on for, um, making motions, um. I have a special tact for, um, being able to encapsulate the desires, um, pretty well, I think.
Okay. Um, so obviously that you're aware of Robert's rules, that, uh, you know, there's like that structure to it, so, uh, you'd be willing to follow that, so I appreciate that. Um, is there any specific idea that you intend to bring if appointed, uh, to this board, committee or commission?
Um, I would just like to be, uh, an ally and, uh, voice for, uh, those, um, who. Uh, you know, require more assistance, um, in the community, uh, than. You know, that they would, that they would need to come to, um. The Housing Authority.
Okay. All right, and that's all the questions I have, um, we appreciate your time, Mister Stevenson, um, and, uh, if you stay on, it will be moving. Uh, everybody back to attendees and we'll be having a discussion here, so thank you for coming out and thank you for volunteering your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, is Miss, eh? Is Mrs. Karen Hatcher here?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Uh, good evening, Miss Hatcher, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves as the previous, uh, candidate and, uh, feel free to give us any information, thank you.
Thank you, I'm Karen Hatcher, um, I live in Groton and I've been a resident here since nineteen ninety seven. Uh, when my husband and my son moved relocated here, I'm originally from the region, or I could say the south southeast and part of Connecticut. And, um, since then, I have been involved in various aspects of government, um, I. Ran for the R T M and I served what was then, I believe, District Eight, which is now Seven. Um, I served, um, one whole term and then a half of my second term, um, due to my husband's, um. Situation, um, I needed to resign, my husband passed away of cancer, um, I think twenty fourteen. So since that time, I've lived in my neighborhood for, you know, some twenty years, I've kept up with politics. Um, and the issues surrounding Groton. I am interested in serving on the authority because of of my interest in affordable housing. Um, I think there's a real need for, um, low income and middle income housing. Um, I know many people are struggling with housing in this region. Um, people can't afford to stay here without adequate housing, so that's where my interest is. Um, I guess I'll stop and and answer it for the questions that you have.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, uh, thank you for coming out, uh, we'll go to, um, Counselor Westerville, you have any questions?
I just wanna, um, let you know, Miss Hatcher, that your resume is quite impressive and, um, with. Some boards that you you've been part of and part of the healthcare organization, I think that is an asset. So thank you for volunteering for this. I don't have any questions at this time, Q.
Uh, Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you, I I would agree that the resume and information's, uh, very supportive, but I would just ask the same question, uh, was what experience? That you have in your past would help prevail if you were to be, um, moved into this, into this position?
Most of my experience has been in government or nonprofit, the nonprofit sector. As, um, one of the positions that I held that I think is extremely relevant is as the. Um, Executive Deputy Director of a Community Action Organization in Hackensett. Um, New Jersey, one of my responsibilities was, uh, affordable housing. And, um, they, I also sat on their, um, Community Housing Improvement Organization that built and developed. Affordable housing. So I have some peripheral experience with what it takes programmatically. To prepare an organization to pursue, uh, housing for their constituents. I have an understanding of low income, housing tax credits, and one of my consulting jobs with, um. Another nonprofit is during, um. The, excuse me, ten housing. Sorry.
Zoom.
Sorry about that, the walkers are going and the dog spits in the window and gets entertained. One of the positions that I held, uh, required. Developing housing for homeless, um. For homeless people with disabilities and, um, the organization was not at the time. Did not have the programmatic structure in place to enable people to live successfully. In what is called emergency housing, transitional housing and permanent housing. And I was hired by, uh, um, the State of New York under DASNY, the Division of Housing and Community Rule. Uh, Renewal, which was headed then by Andrew Formo. To come in, I was a group of, uh, consultants to help nonprofits who then receive tax credits. To really develop the infrastructure, the programmatic infrastructure, so individuals and families would be successful. As they transfer to those various levels of housing. So I think, um, that experience around housing development and the programmatic aspect would be, um. Would help me be, um, successful in contributing to this, to being a member on the board. Or the Housing Authority, I should say, excuse me.
You're all set, Counselor McBride?
Yep, actually, I have, well, another additional question, uh, based on your experience, and just to backdrop, the council. I think it was a year or so ago, received some reports and some of the two, the two high priority items that I, for what I can recall. Uh, the council was considering was a, a rental assistance program and a first time home buyers program. Do you have any experience with those two particular programs, because I think hopefully the next council will 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 tend to. Move those forward, so I'd like to hear if you had any experience on those two programs.
I have some experience with the rental assistance program, um, and that came about through my position with the City of New York as, um. Uh, an Assistant Commissioner. Uh, where my principal responsibility was for the Home Energy Assistance Program. Which was the largest urban program in the United States and part of that. Was in addition to providing support for home heating assistance, we also had a rental program. Or what we called the Emergency Assistance Program that was tied with rental assistance and, um, emergency home heating.
Great, thank you.
Alrighty, uh, I, my question similar, I'll be asked these of all the, uh, the applicants, um, are you aware, uh, Miss Hatcher of, uh, Robert's rules?
I think they're essential, I'm aware of them, sometimes we don't always follow them. Um, and it's probably a little pet peeve of mine that we, you know, it brings continuity, it brings structure. And it's, I think it's so essential, but I also recognize that sometimes when we're invited to, um. Participate in certain groups, there tends to be, there could be not. A disregard, but it's just, it's lack of formality. And so things get, get done just by. Sometimes not following the rules or simply documenting the decisions that are made or documenting the discussion that led to the decision.
No, absolutely, I think the procedures based on Robert's rules are very important, uh, very important for anyone in this position to follow, um. And, uh, I would agree with the rest of the counselors here, um, yeah, very, uh, impressive resume, uh, your experience, I think, uh, shows it. Um. And, uh, uh, there's no other questions, so I, we just appreciate your time and, um, same thing, as I said, everybody else will be moving over you over to. To attendees and you can feel free to watch the rest of the meeting and we'll be having the discussion here on, uh, who to select and we appreciate you taking the time. Both to come interview and to volunteer on many of our boards, commissions and authorities, so.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. So just so everyone's aware of for, um, counselors, um. Is that for, this is for the Housing Authority, uh, there's only, uh, what says here, one vacancy at least. And I just wanna verify. Okay, yeah, so there's one, uh. One position there, uh, I did reach out, I don't know if any of the counselors did, but, uh, I did reach out to the Chair. Uh, Mister Frank and, uh, you know, said exactly what he's looking for, somebody to sit on, on the authority. Um, stated that he wanted somebody with, uh, possibly with executive, um. Uh, experience sitting on a board, an executive board and or some financial experience. So I just, it's, think it's important to take some of that into consideration when making a decision and we'll have that discussion here after we do all the interviews. Uh, so I wanna let that be known. Um, okay, so now we'll move on here. Unless we have any questions from the council, we'll move on to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, which has three vacancies and five applicants. So, uh, we have to do our, continue doing our due diligence and we'll just interview all the, uh, applicants who came, so we'll go down the list, is Mister Olson here?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Mister Olson, for coming out, uh, same thing, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Tom Olson, I live at one eighty eight Crossman's, uh, Drive here in Groton, I've served on the, uh, uh, Town and Groton Conservation Commission. Uh, I'm also involved in a number of other, uh, volunteer organizations such as Groton Open Space, Tri-Town Trail. Uh, the, uh, Naval Submarine Museum. As well as the supervisor of shipbuilding, uh. My experience is all, I did twenty four years active duty in the Navy, uh, then eighteen years as a Navy civilian. Uh, uh, I had the supervisor of shipbuilding and electric boat, a significant experience, uh, dealing with financial issues and billions of dollars. And, uh, and ma- managing hundreds of people. Uh, but, uh, it, you know, recognizing that this is the focus onto the Complete Streets, invite, uh, uh, I did, uh, support the, uh, uh, initial set. Uh, a committee that was set up by, uh, um, Counselor Baumgartner, uh, as a representative for the Conservation Commission. Uh, I've worked extensively, uh, with, under my Tri-Town Trail hat with the, uh, Department of Transportation, uh, uh, Unit Number Two here. Uh, particularly up in the Preston area, uh, in regard to, uh, getting traffic controls and stuff for the, uh, for the Tri-Town Trail established and working with the. Uh, first select woman, uh, up in Preston and and having a deal in those areas. Uh, and I've also worked with, uh, G- Gosa right now, uh, is working, uh, with the Department of Transportation. Uh, one of the first implementations here, uh, in the town, which will be down at the B B Co Vista area. On Noah Ledger Road, uh, and I've been working as far as on the easements and and those type of items that need to get done. To make a complete streets actually happen, which will be, this will really be the first time where the state, because of the actions taken by this town council to, uh, adopt the, uh, procedures. And policies, uh, to get that in, and this will be one of the first demonstration areas, not that big, you know, it's not like miles or anything. Uh, be just basically about a block long section, uh, uh, across from the Avalonia, uh, Anderson Marsh. Uh, and the, and the, and with the, uh, uh, Groton's Open Space B B Cove area, uh, but it's gonna, it's, I've been working with them and, uh, it's, it's a good experience as far as in this area. That's about all I have, pending your questions.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Westerville?
I'll defer to Counselor McBride first, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you, Tom, for all of your involvement, uh, assisting with projects in the past. Um, one of the questions I had was, if if you were moved on this committee, what would be the most important item you'd like to? Uh, take up or consider that you think this committee, uh, should be dealing with at the current time?
The biggest item is really getting, the the State of Connecticut is obviously here, was putting the master plan together as far as where can we focus? Rather than get these little bits and pieces, uh, what actions can the town coordinate with the state? Particularly taking a look at the high use areas, uh, such as a- along Route One corridor area to get the complete streets really implemented in the, and where there's. Uh, a be- a greater need than down in, on, on, uh, down at B B Cove, for example.
Thank you. I'm also that chair.
Also, thank you, Counselor Westerville, would you like to come back?
No, I believe his, uh, earlier opening comments, um, helped very much so, so I'm, I'm good for now.
Okay, um, and. So Mister Olson, I know you're, you're, obviously, you sit on our commissions and so you're, you're aware of Robert's rules, I could assume, correct?
Yes, very well, and I've had to be in, in, uh, in my other organizations where I've been a, a president and such that I've been having to. Uh, go through the motions and and keeping everybody in line with them.
Okay. Um. And I guess one concern would be just for me is, I, obviously you sit on our Conservation Commission. Uh, do you see any conflicting issues, uh, between sitting on conservation and then sitting on the complete streets?
Uh, not at this time, I think they, they, they're com- compatible, but, uh, as an advisory commission, uh, you know, Conservation Commission really doesn't. Do anything, uh, relative to, that would have any impact, uh, that could directly affect, uh, uh, again, the, uh, Complete Streets Advisory Commission. See, both of them being advisory, it's just making recommendations, and at this point, I don't see a, uh, conflict, and that's why we, why it was, I was asked to. Be involved in the initial setup, uh, they were looking for a representation to making sure that the conservation advocacy, uh, is included in the discussions.
All right. Okay, I thank you for your answers, um, thank you for what you do, uh, which you wanna continue to do, so, uh, we appreciate you coming here and, uh. It will put, move you to attendees as well, and thank you for your time and, uh, we'll, we'll have that discussion here soon, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Alrighty, we'll move on to, uh, Laurel Hendrickson, are you here?
Yes, it's Lori, just FYI.
All right, yes, sorry about that, well, nice to meet you, if you wanna introduce yourself as well, thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Hendrickson, um, I've lived in Mystic almost my whole life, um, I was born here and I only left really for college. And I moved abroad, um, after that, so I lived in Spain for about three years. And that's kind of where I realized how passionate I was about helping to plan the town and helping to plan just the way people live, um, I think growing up. Always in the same area, you don't consider other ways that you could do things, but to move and live in a totally different way for years. Really makes you reconsider, basically. You know, every aspect of how we live, but definitely just how, how they're set up. Um, so during that time, I lived, um, in Spain for three years, working at a school. And I didn't have a car, so I relied on public transportation, biking, walking, so I definitely have that perspective of being somebody that. You know, does rely on public transportation and the safety of the streets to get around, um, and I know for me personally. That brought so much, just like happiness to my life, I loved. I loved having people in the streets, everybody being together, I would take the bus with my students most days to school. Um, so I definitely bring that perspective, um, and now I'm a teacher at Grasso Tech in the town, obviously, I coach. Um, I'm gonna be late to a game today, but that's okay, um, and so I have the perspective as well of the kids. And knowing that it's very hard for them to kind of get around. Use their bikes, walk, get parents to pick them up, like all of those things really influence their life so much, and I would love for that to be easier for them. Um, and I'm also bilingual, so I speak Spanish now after having lived in Spain, so I offer that. Um, and I sir, well, I'm not on Bike Groton, but I have been attending the Bike Groton meetings for the good, the better part of the year now, so. I'm kind of just trying to get involved, this would really be my first actual appointment of a committee. Um, but I hope to get more involved and I definitely am very passionate about the topic.
Well, thank you for being with us and, uh, we appreciate you sacrificing, uh, the game and what you do for, with our kids, so, um, uh, Counselor Westerville?
Yes, uh, thank you very much for, uh, for coming out and being interviewed and volunteering for this important position. I'm just curious if you have any specific focus for what you, what you've seen in Groton since you've been back and living here? Where do you think we might focus Complete Streets at?
Um, I think Groton is a town, obviously, that's so spread out, we have, you know, center Groton, city of Groton and Mystic, which are all such different. Environments, um, for me personally, I. I just wanna bring like more life to the town and and just more livable areas where people are. You know, with their family, with their friends, experiencing the outdoors and and getting around happily. Um, so I think definitely the, just the center of Groton where you have so many. Busy roads and strip malls, um, and roads that are kind of busy to to walk around or bike around, I mean, if you see somebody walking. You almost feel like you should stop and ask them if they wanna ride because it seems so out of place. So for me, it would just be making it much more, um, commutable and just. Safer for people to walk, bike, use public transit and just really with the end goal of bringing just more life to the town. And connecting those areas, because I don't think that there is a super accessible area or way to get from, for example. Downtown Mystic to downtown Groton, um, I would love for the town to feel more whole in that way.
Thank you, um, thank you very much, um, that's it for me for now.
All right, thank you, and Counselor McBride?
Uh, thank you, my question was going to be along the same lines on what you thought would be the most important item or impact to move things forward, but I think you just addressed that. Uh, with Counselor Westerville's question, so thank you.
I think, uh, I would agree with other counselors, but I think just for reiter- re- reiteration for myself, uh, that what fascinates me, um. Kind of about what your experience is, you know, living, you living. Uh, in in a different location and we're con- constantly, constantly just tunnel vision focused here in Groton. Uh, is there something, again, specifically that fascinated you in Spain? Uh, that you think we could bring, I know you said like connectivity of things, but is there something specific, again, sorry, I'm asking that again, but.
Yeah, that's great, um, I think two, two main things stick out for me, so in Spain, um, I mean, like I said, taking the bus with my students, for me, at first was wild, but then. Felt so cool, um, but on the days where I would take my bike to school, I was probably. It was like, it would have been a forty five minute walk if I'd walked to, to school in the morning. And if I took my bike, I could get there from my apartment to the school across the city, only in bike lanes. Never had to, never had to enter the road one time, um, so for me, that was so huge. And I just felt such like, just like a little kid, you know what I mean, I was like, in bike lanes, riding around the city, safe as ever. You know, waiting for like the tiny little red lights to change and getting to school, to me, that just felt, I truly felt like a little kid getting there, so. I don't, don't have that same sensation when I'm riding my bike here, obviously, um, and then when I moved from Spain. There is, um, a very main road that went right through the city in the historic area, very trafficky, all the main bus roads. Bus routes went, um, through that road, and when I moved, I recently saw in the, in the newspaper there. That that road was turned into pedestrian only. And I was like, I must be reading it wrong, like my Spanish has gotten worse, I don't know what happened, and I was texting everybody being like. Did the, did the principal road get turned into just pedestrians and they were like, yeah, it's, it's only for pedestrians now. They have road races, like there's so much life in that road, and I thought to myself, I cannot imagine that happening here. Um, and then I thought, you know. I want things like that to happen, I'm not trying to change Route One into being pedestrian only or anything like that. I want things like that to happen. I'm not trying to change Route One into being pedestrian only or anything like that. I just think it's really cool to rethink. The ways in which we use our roads and see that it could be used differently to make life so much cooler to live in this town. So for me, those are like the two main things that I was like, just so shocked by um that that make me want to get involved and kind of make the town cooler.
Well, thank you for that. Um no, yeah, I I agree. It's interesting to look, you know, uh and I think it's important to differentiate our. Town roads versus the state roads and kind of that that conversation, we how we can cooperate with our state roads. Uh sometimes things can be done, sometimes they can't, uh but it doesn't mean we cannot have those conversations anyway, we can't, so. Uh I thank you uh for coming out and um feel free to stay on and we'll be having that discussion here on uh who we think was fit best for the. Um the committee, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Alright, is. Next, we have Michael Kane, is Michael Kane on? Mr. Kane, are you on? No? One's going twice, okay. Uh next, uh we have Patrice Granitowski, are you here?
I'm here, Michael Kane's here, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Kane is here.
Alright, sorry about that, she's. How are you doing, Mr. Kane? If you'd like to introduce yourself?
Oh, I apologize, I'm still at work, so I don't know what the, what kind of screen you're getting here, but uh I apologize. Um can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you.
Uh yeah, feel free to introduce yourself, you could hear us.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh certainly, yeah, no doubt. I'm Michael Kane, I live on in uh the city on uh Jupiter and Jupiter Point. Um. Some of my background is I've uh I'm Board of Director of the Jupiter Point Association. I worked on the uh City of Groton Fame Street Revitalization Road Building Committee. Uh Phase Two School Building Committee, I was on that. And I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission uh just about twenty, twenty-one years. Um I I'm really passionate about this stuff. It's that seems like the first two people. Were were very good and I'm I'm grateful that the town is able to get such good people to to be interested in these things. Um I don't know, I think complete streets are really uh the whole idea is uh long overdue. The uh this design is going, will allow a larger group of people to travel safely through town. And uh increase, I think, economic and uh livability in the in the town that doesn't exist today. Um I don't know, so so often, I I see on planning and zoning where the roads are treated as. Avenues for the automobile and uh we forget that it is a public right of way that uh. That at at some point in time, uh horses were on it and then trolleys and then cars. And it seems as if cars have taken over and it makes uh walking and bicycling and uh. Accessibility very difficult. And I would, I would like to be part of fixing that problem.
Alrighty, well, thank you for being with us. Um councillor Westerville, do you have anything?
Uh thank you, thank you, Mr. Kane. Um I believe your comments that you just finished with would have answered the question that I was gonna have. About where your focus might be, so thank you very much for that.
No doubt.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, councillor McBride?
Thank you. Just a similar question to the previous um applicants is, what do you think would be the most important item to tackle or to move on, move forward with in this committee? Uh right out of the gate?
Well, uh you know, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've been always struggling with. Uh the focus on the downtown area, Big Y in that area down there. And uh if anyone has ever tried to cross the street down there, it's nearly impossible. Uh I I see that it that that area. Is uh vital to our economic development and I think that that would be where I would try to start. Um and and uh focus on the issues that are there. There's a a lot of. You know, new development going in down on Drastic Drive right now, and I think we should capitalize on that.
Thank you.
Also councillor McBride?
Yes, I am, thank you, Chair.
But um same uh question I've been asking everybody. Um. Uh Mr. Kane, I know you're on pl- planning and zoning, so you're uh aware of Robert's rules, correct?
I I am and I'm very comfortable with uh, you know, and. With, you know, working with Robert's rules, certainly.
Um and councillor McBride asked kind of the question I was intending to ask. Um. So uh we thank you for your time. Um and thank you for calling in while you're still working, so we appreciate your.
Yeah, no doubt. No, I I'm uh, I mean, the thing that, if I could just add one more little tidbit. Is that I I've been in business for forty years, I'm in the building business. And a lot of the things that I do in the building business are, in a way, uh. You know, trying to accommodate the most number of people, if you're building a house. Um the way that you sell houses is making a a house that is uh. Accessible to the most number of people. And I and uh a lot of times those kinds of changes. Don't cost any more money, but you can open up the streets to um. To a wider group of people and uh and be more successful as a town or as a builder. Anyway, that's it, thank you.
Of course, no, thank you. Um and we appreciate your time, again, thank.
No doubt.
Alrighty. Uh we'll move, change that. Um okay, no, next applicant is Patrice Granitowski.
Hello.
Good evening, she's same thing, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Uh Patrice Granitowski, thirty North Prospect in Groton. Um I have been involved in town government for a long time. Um I served on the RTM, uh chaired the RTM Finance Committee, uh was a member of the Charter Revision Commission. Uh served on the town council for four years and served as the town mayor for four years as well. Um it was my appointment in twenty twenty-one that started the Complete Streets Work Group. So I would really like to see this follow through. Um the two candidates you interviewed, Mr. Vogel and Ms. Hendrickson are both. Um exceptional candidates and um I would be honored to serve with them and the other members as well.
And just to clarify, I believe the first person was Mr. Olson. Yes, yes ma'am. Um just for uh just correct that. Um yeah, we appreciate your time. Uh it's good to see you back again. Um yeah, we'll ask some questions. Uh councillor uh Westerville?
Good evening.
Um at this point, I don't have any uh, I don't have any questions. I do understand uh Ms. Granitowski's um qualifications for this and what she's done. For this committee, so I do appreciate uh what you have done. Thank you.
Uh councillor McBride?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, my question would just be, yeah, I understand the background that you have in involved with this committee as well and thank you for your efforts. Uh my question would just be the similar question that I've had to the others and what would you believe would be the most important item that you would tackle or move forward with as part of this committee?
Um the council or the Advisory Committee. Um I feel would be more of a supportive role to whatever the council is doing, so if the council is looking for. Um input or advice or um work to be done on a policy that they're considering, that's where I think we would step in. Um certainly, I believe that we should be trying to focus on um the area with a potential rail development. But the current mass transit that we have with the um seat transit system. Um is also very vital and in the past decade, we've seen movements to try to decrease. Service to the most um needed population in the town and in the city in particular. And um I would like us to really pay attention to that and be an advocate for uh the people that use the current mass transit system. Um I'm also uh very much uh in favor of the bike lanes. Um we were very proud that one of the first things we did was Thomas Road and we had bike lanes installed on Thomas Road. So that is um something that I would really like to just continue. And act in a supportive role to the councillors who are the policy decision makers in town.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um. Skrenitowski, uh I'll ask the same question even though I already know what the answer, but you're aware of Robert's rules, correct?
Yes.
Okay, um and then uh councillor McBride asked the same similar question, you know, what what you're, you would be directed in, what direction you'd want to go in, for example. Uh you did mention it briefly, you are interested in looking at um the expansion of the Eastern Corridor, I believe, with the state is working on uh with Rhode Island and all that, correct?
Yes, expansion of Shoreline East, I would love to see uh Mr. Steever from the uh Resilience and Sustainability Task Force has been the main advocate. For the expansion of um Shoreline East through Groton and to citing the um rail station over by um CBS Big Y. Um I think any support that we could provide for that uh would be um most welcome by the community. Uh we had a very nice turnout at that meeting that um the state sponsored here in Groton, so. I think we should be supportive of um that expansion as well as the existing uh transit that we have already.
Agreed, I could, thank you. Um yeah, we appreciate you taking the time as well for you. Um we'll start having that discussion, so uh thank you for coming up.
Thank you, I just had a quick question for you. Do you need us to stay on or can we log off? I don't know if you have further questions or not.
Uh I, how does, how is the the councillors feeling? Are you guys comfortable with letting everyone get off at their at their moment?
Yes.
I'm happy to stay if you'd like, I just wasn't sure if you had further discussion.
I I think you're all set.
You're all set? Okay, thank you very much for your time, good luck to you and thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Um yes, I'll just reiterate that again. Uh anybody who's in in attendance, um please feel free to. Log off, you do not have to be here. Uh this is where uh the councillors and uh we will be having a discussion on uh to fill the slots, uh we'll have um. To make some decisions here, so we'll be having that discussion, so if you have to go, please feel free to log off, don't feel like you have to stay. Uh thank you, so. Um. So that is everybody that's here. If you look at the rest of the agenda councillors, you'll see um we have an appointment for alternate. You'll see, you read through the packet, right? So there's appointments for alternate, these are full members who actually per law are going to be turning into alternates. Uh it was only during the reevaluation that they were, they were able to take on more members. Um so that is the, they'll be going to the Board Assessments and Appeals. Uh that's for Board Assessment and Appeals. Um. Then there's a reappointment for uh all the reappointments for the Fair Rent Commission, except like I said with Taylor Samuel, because he is no longer. Uh she's no longer with us, so um then we have a reappointment for the Permanent School Building Committee. Uh and one, or it's two for the permanent school building and then one for Parks and Rec uh Commission. Is there any questions right now between the two of us, three of us?
Uh I did have one question, it might be something that I, I'm sorry, David, did I interrupt you?
No, no, I was just saying I didn't have any questions on the reappointments.
I don't have any questions on the reappointments either. Um I think they're fairly self-explanatory, but I did have a question, looking back at the. And maybe I misunderstood something with the um Complete Streets. Um with the Complete Streets Advisory Committee, where it shows. Are we voting for two people or three people? Because it looks like there's three vacancies on. I don't know, uh it would be page fourteen of the agenda, yet page fifteen of the agenda shows only two vacancies.
See. Complete Streets, oh I see it here and you said the the front, yeah, it's it'll be three positions. Um yeah, it'll be three, uh two of them being uh organizational um appointments, which we already filled. And so, yeah, so it'll be three, that answers my question.
Yes.
Okay, uh David, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set with with um with the order of proceeding.
Okay, um if there's any discussion, I mean. Um. I'm thinking uh and you know, this is the whole point of us having that discussion, Paul Fox uh did not attend, but um you know, that's their prerogative. Um I would be fine with uh pushing his um. His recommendation to the council uh with that correct date. Um and then I would. We can keep, we can go down the list, if everybody's okay with it, we'll go down the list, but I would make this as one motion. Um if we can agree. Um. Uh but we can have that discussion first on who we think would be best for Grand Housing Authority. Um and we can have that discussion, um if we can come down to a consensus. Um how's everybody feeling that?
Uh just, just and Chair, would you, would you like a uh motion on what I would, not to say that it is controversial, but the ones that. Um you know, the Paul Fox appointment. Donald Marshon, Matthew Dion, Robert Devoe, Guinevue Depot, Jamie Giorgiano, David Russell and Elizabeth Hogan, to serve those. Uh commissions as stated in the in the package?
Yeah, I was just, if you're comfortable, uh if we can come to a consensus, I was hoping we could just do one motion. Uh if we could agree with, you know, the um the the individuals going for the complete streets and ground housing. So maybe we could have that discussion first and uh depending on how we feel, uh we can, alright? Uh councillor Westerville, are you okay with that?
Uh yes, I am.
Okay, um so I guess we'll start off first. Um. Does anybody have a, uh you know, is there a preference where they stand? I mean, I I'll, I can lead the the conversation first, but Grand Housing Authority, um. I think they're both very versed in in their careers, they they're both very educated and they had a good resume. Um but when it came down to it, it was um talking to uh Mr. Frank, the the chair. Of the Grand Housing Authority in having that discussion that he wanted somebody who experienced in either nonprofit, uh the executive uh level. And some financial background. Um for me, it came that I think Karen Hatcher is. Better qualified and in no way, form, shape or form am I saying that nobody's qualified, but I think it's just a little slightly more qualified. Um or better suit, so I say for uh the Housing Authority. Um based on her experience both with nonprofit and in um. In New York, where she said she worked on multiple projects there for housing, so um is there discussion on that?
Yeah, I would, I would just.
Go ahead, David, I'm sorry.
That's, I would, I would agree with your comments, Chair, I think Dane has, brings a tremendous wealth of experience. Um and and would be suitable for this position as well, however, I think Karen Hatcher, um you know, kind of outshined with her, with her extensive experience. Uh in housing affairs and and she spoke thoroughly about that, so I would support uh your your recommendation.
And I believe as well that either one would be an an asset to the Groton Housing Authority, but I think with the experience. In directly in this field that um Ms. Hatcher has, um I think she would be, you know, better suited to hit the ground running. Um and make an immediate impact for them.
Okay, um I appreciate, you know, the forefrontness from everyone. Um I know it's a difficult position that this is, this is, but we, at the end of the day, we have to. Pick somebody who will have the most direct impact, so I I think we could agree with that one. Um so uh ob- obviously, as you can see in the packet, there's an empty box there, so I'm just filling it out as we go. And then when we, if we get comfortable with the complete streets, if we can come to consensus and I'll just read them one motion and. We can discuss there and and move forward. Um alright, so uh so that is for the Grand Housing Authority. Um for Complete Streets Advisory Committee, obviously, there's three vacancies and five applicants. Um. I thought, um I thought all, uh Mr. and obviously Mr. Vogel was was not in attendance, so let's make that clear here. Uh so we have a pool of of four applicants, but we do have uh Mr. Vogel's um application, so it is in front of you as well, I believe, here. Um so is there any discussion on that or would you like me to lead that one as well? Is there, Mr. uh councillor Westerville, do you have anything?
Um I would say uh from listening to to everyone, um it it's a tough decision. Um I do think all of the candidates have. Um some great experience and things that they would bring to the table. Um some great experience and things that they would bring to the table. Um Mister Olson has been kind of moving in this direction for quite some time, he's been very uh very much an advocate of this. Um and I did appreciate Miss Hendrickson's um her commitment and the idea, or you know, I think. I think she could invigorate the the committee. Um, and so the third person that I would um think about. Between Miss Granitowski and um and Mister Kane. Um I like both of their ideas and what they're thinking, I'm very much in support of the um increased. Uh you know, the the extension of Shoreline East, so that makes it very tough, so I'm I'm actually gonna hold off. On my third thought, uh my third person that I'm thinking about, but I believe Miss Hendrickson and and Mister Olson are are very good. Candidates.
Lori, Counselor McBride, would you like to speak?
Yes, certainly, I I would agree with Counselor Westerville, uh for the points you mentioned, Tom Olson has a tremendous. Uh wealth of knowledge and involvement over the past, so I would support that, uh Lori Hendrickson, I'm excited, uh she seems to. You know, bring a, bring a sense of, you know, fresher breath air, some great ideas, some ingenuity, and I I I kind of support her. Interest and and I I think she would be a good uh addition to the Advisory Committee as well. Um and with Michael Kane and and um Patrice Granitowski, I I would agree, it's a difficult. Uh decision because both of them are qualified, um. However, I I think I'm leaning towards, and and just to back up, I am, I'm a little uh. It's too bad that uh Mister Vogel wasn't uh able to come tonight, because I have had numerous conversations with him, and I should have started with this. About the Complete Streets, and he's someone that is passionate about the roads, and I would have really liked to have been able to talk to him tonight about his ideas. Uh because he would be a, you know, I I I know of him in his past, and he would be a nice addition to this as well, uh but I find it hard to support. Uh someone if they're not not coming to attend and to hear our questions and our thoughts, so. Um but I'm supportive of him going forward in in this role and and um his future commitment to Groton, uh with that being said. I'm kind of leaning more towards um uh Patrice Granitowski, just because of her involvement in the past. Uh I think it would be good for Groton, uh if she's coming back in, she's got a tremendous past in history in Groton. It would be great to have her involved in this initiative, and I think, and I respect Michael Kane for all of his efforts tremendously. Uh he's doing a lot in Groton in in his current role, so I think it would be nice uh to have Patrice come back, and I think the greater good of Groton. Uh would be good if we can pick up uh Patrice to come back. And Michael Kane to continue to be involved in in his, where his passions are now. And to continue to move forward, maybe something will hope, open up in the past, so that's kind of uh where my thoughts are. Thank you.
Thank you, uh thank you both, um I'll reiterate some of the same comments, I think. Uh Miss Hendrickson brought that uh breath of fresh ideas, living, having that opportunity, living, you know. Out of country in Spain, I think brings that new perspective on how roads. And pedestrian safety and just something different that we're showing, we're not used to here in the US and in Connecticut and in Groton. So I think I definitely, uh I think that's what fascinates me about uh that applicant, um. I would also agree with uh supporting uh Patrice Granitowski, being a former mayor. Her experience in in starting the formation of the Complete Streets, uh her experience. Um and her idea, you know, of 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 expanding the Eastern Corridor, um is something that I I find interesting and I could support that. Um, same thing, and that's where it comes down, I agree with the difficult decision between Michael Kane and uh. And Thomas Olson, where they both both uh sit on our commissions. Uh they both do great work, uh they're both very knowledgeable, um but I could support, um. Had more of that experience in um in with uh bike Groton and then pedestrian safety and that aspect of it. So I could see myself uh supporting Mister Olson. And um so I think my recommendation, if if there's discussion here to continue being had, is uh. Moving forward with Mister Olson, um Lori Hendrickson and Patrice Granitowski, um. But I'd love to hear, uh I know you want to still discuss your third. Uh Counselor Westerville, let's see uh how you're feeling, or if you oppose any of those ideas?
I, there's nothing to oppose, um it's just I believe that the candidates are are qualified. Um and they make very good candidates, um I do understand, um and I do understand. What uh Miss Granitowski has brought to the town for quite some time. And uh the same with uh Mister Kane being on planning and zoning for twenty-one years, I think that's a. A big benefit, but I believe that. I'm gonna say from a. Trying to see how I can say this, uh I think just. Knowledge of the the inner workings of um how some of these committees that they'll be interfacing with. I realize it's an advisory thing, um but I think that moving, moving forward with things like uh. Shoreline East and trying to expand that area with uh um the. Public, public transportation and that sort of thing, I believe, and I believe that Miss Granitowski probably has the edge.
So if everybody feels comfortable, I think, um I'll fill in the the boxes and I'll repeat it all, uh so, you know, you and the public can hear it. But um comfortable moving with, moving forward, unless there's uh. Any disagreement, but I'm comfortable moving with um moving forward to Mister Hendrickson. Uh Mrs. Hendrickson, Mister Olson, and Mrs. Granitowski. Uh, so let me just fill this information out. Okay. Uh is there any other discussion before I put a motion on the floor, Counselor Westerville?
Just muted myself, um no, I I'm very comfortable, thank you.
Uh Counselor McBride?
No, I'm comfortable as well, thank you.
Um, alrighty, so we'll make the, I'll make the motion, uh motion to recommend a resolution appointing the following individuals to the authorized ABCs as noted. Appointment, Paul Fox, Democrat, two SX Street, Resilience and Sustainability Task Force. Expire uh term expiration three five twenty twenty-five. Appointment of Karen Hatcher, D, uh two thirty Crosswinds Drive, uh. Let me make sure, Crosswinds Drive, No Inc., Ground Housing Authority, term expiring seven thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Appointment of Lori Hendrickson, thirty. West Main Street Apartment One Mystic, to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee Term Expiring two seven twenty twenty-four. Appointment of Patrice Granitowski, thirty North Prospect Street, to Complete Streets, to the Complete Streets Advisory Committee. Term expiring two seven twenty twenty-five. Appointment of Tom Olson, one eighty-eight Crosswinds Drive, No Inc. To Complete Streets Advisory Committee Term Expiring two seven twenty twenty-four. Appointment for alternate for Donald Marcand Junior U. Um, one sixty-five Shellville Road Mystic, to the Board of Assessment Appeals, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-six. Appointment alternate to Matthew Dion, R one sixty-nine Ridgewood Drive Mystic, Board of Assessment Appeals, term expiring twelve thirty-one. Twenty twenty-six. Uh reappointment to Robert DeVoe Junior, thirty-three Library Street Mystic. To the Fair Rent Commission, term expiring oh seven oh one twenty twenty-six. Reappointment of Guinevere Depot, uh once uh D, one sixty-two Shenandoah Parkway, to the Fair Rent Commission, term expiring. Oh uh seven one twenty twenty-five. Uh we're skipping the next one because they no longer live here, so reappointment of Jamie Giordano U. Eight Bass Drive, to the Permanent School Building Committee, uh I think term expiring nine twenty-nine twenty twenty-six. Reappointment of David Russell, D seventy-three Ronald Drive. Per- to the Permanent School Building Committee Term Expiring nine twenty-nine twenty twenty-six. And the reappointment of Elizabeth Hogan U, twenty-three Friendship Circle, to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term expiring twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-eight. I still move. So, that was motion made by Jacome, second by Westerville. Is there any other discussion? Alright, seeing none, I'll move for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries, three zero zero. Is there any other business? Alrighty, seeing none, uh I'll make a motion to adjourn.
McBride will second.
Motion to adjourn, a bunch of comms, second by McBride. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions, motion carries three zero zero, we are adjourned at six thirty-four PM. Alright, thank you for everybody, uh we appreciate you coming out as all and volunteering your time, thank you.